All right, being at six o'clock, we'll go ahead and call the meeting in order. We'll start with pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Go ahead. Approved agendas, are there any additions or corrections?
Nope.
I'll take a motion to approve.
Take the motion to approve the agenda as is.
Thank you, Ryan. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Consent to agendas, are there any questions or concerns? If not, I'd take a motion to approve.
Take the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ryan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is that Ryan's second?
Yep.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. All right, no visitors. Mayor's report. We have an Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas the health of the people is tied to the health of the forest and whereas trees and forests improve our physical health by cleaning the area, reducing exposure to the sun's UV rays and decreasing temperatures during the summertime and whereas childhood asthma rates are lower in urban communities that have a higher density of trees and whereas trees and forests improve our mental health by reducing stress and increasing concentration and whereas in 50 years, one tree provides air pollution control and whereas forests create high-quality drinking water by acting as a natural filter and whereas getting a daily dose of trees is healthy for all Minnesotans and whereas each year on the last day of, on the last Friday in April and throughout the month of May, Minnesotans pay special tribute to rural and community trees and all the natural resources and dedicate themselves to the continued vitality of our state's forests. Now therefore, I, Mayor Dan Egler, Mayor of the City of Casson, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the City of Casson, Minnesota, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. One more thing under Mayor's report. I was going through the minutes and I see the fire department is looking at for some more hires and I've mentioned a couple times in their, through here and through their fire relief, they've had a few issues of they ain't sure the policy on who gets what when they hire them. So I am asking the fire chief and the council to go along with no new hires until we get an SOP explaining the rules of what everybody's going to be doing because they were having issues like buying shirts and then people quitting a month and so on and just see if we can start an SOP. So, so, and I've mentioned it to them before at the relief meeting, so they know about it, they just haven't done it. So I'd like to see that come to, before we hire. Then we have fewer issues now and fewer issues down the road.
For those in the audience, what is that, those three?
An SOP is a standard operating procedure, sorry. So it's just, and most businesses have them, I mean, we have them in other departments. That way you just have a, the who you're hiring knows what's expected of them plus the fire department knows plus the future knows. So, you know, if they're, it's just a written guideline to help any issues down the road.
Did you talk to the chief about this?
I've brought it up at least two different fire relief through the, through that board because they're actually the board that will purchase the shirts for the new members, so.
So is this more of an outline of the equipment that they're to be given?
Yeah.
Hire or after how much time or?
Yep.
Okay.
I'd like to see that more standardized because they were even concerned at one time, well, we bought this but then we did this, so I'd like to get it in writing so they, you know, and I'd like to do that before we hire more and then go, oh, we should have done that, so.
What are their current numbers at, do we know?
They're 28.
28.
So within acceptable?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think to the mayor's point, you know, we, the issue they're having is that they buy an outfit for someone who then leaves and then it's, it's more to just support the fire relief because we don't want them spending money they don't have to. So I mean, I'll talk to the fire chief and reiterate the mayor's concerns to make sure that if you have good applicants, we don't want to slow down the projects down when we have to. But I don't think doing a simple standard operating procedure for this should be overly difficult. Just kind of saying, okay, you're going to get a T-shirt when you're first hired and then you're going to have to wait six months before you get the, or finish certain classes before you get the formal wear because, I mean, it's pretty expensive, it's a thousand dollars a piece, so.
And, and they've, they've got an, a list of what they want to purchase, but they haven't officially made it written down and, you know, and I'd like to see it official instead of, so then we don't all of a sudden, six months down the road and we hire somebody else and like, oh, we'll give you this, you know, let's make everybody standardized.
Do they have an official probationary period?
They do.
Six months. And I mean, you know, I think it's more, for them, it's more of the timeframe when they have to finish certain classes and if they don't finish them within a certain timeframe, I mean, you know, recently we had a few of them that were released from, that were only on the department for maybe two months and it's because they weren't hitting their performance statistics or criteria, so.
Yeah, and then some of those, when you start buying sweatshirts and T-shirts and polo shirts and putting their name on it, it kind of gets expensive and then they're.
Sure.
Okay, that is all I had for that. There's no public forum, public hearing, body worn camera, public hearing. So if the chief would come up and go through that, I'd appreciate it. So from my standpoint, the policy hasn't changed last time I presented it to the council. I don't know if there's anybody in the public that wants to make any comments on it. Do you want to open up to that right now or do you want to talk about the policy more?
Well, why don't you run through some of your red line stuff? I mean, we have the policy there and council's seen it before, maybe just highlight the big changes that you're looking at or the big additions.
The red line stuff is the required language from the state, so it's not changes.
Maybe just highlight what their state's requiring for this.
So it, some of the requirements, there's a lot, yeah. Some of the highlights are that, that it is confidential private data and only people that can access the body worn camera footage are the people that are in it or we can release it to the public to quell rumors and stuff when there's a use of force incident. Those are some of the major things. And then also identifies who are protected people, like undercover officers, mandated reporters and stuff like that.
If I'm reading it correctly, then you're the one that's responsible for going through and redacting or obscuring identities if need be?
Yes.
Before things are released?
Yes.
Could you talk a little bit about, so under E, number two there, whenever an officer fails to record an activity that's required to be recorded in the policy, could you maybe just delineate some of those required activities that need to be recorded?
So essentially, they should be recording everything except for general citizen contact. So any call that they get dispatched to, they should be recording. Only ones that they shouldn't be recording and it's up to them if they want to, if they're just talking to, like the mayor comes up, talks to me, I don't have to record that, but they do have the option to record those type of incidents.
So basically, all the time?
Yes.
Except when it's just, you know, in the office or something like that?
Yeah.
These turn on at the same time the camera in the car turns on or do they have to turn it on?
So that's what we want to get body cameras, whatever we have for body cameras, we want to have for our same, in-car cameras that are all the same system. So they're activated by either the car or on the person.
So one touch basically would do both? Would activate the person and the car?
Yes.
Okay.
They work off Bluetooth, so I want to go with Axon, I do have the numbers too I can present to you too. So I want to go with Axon because that's what we have for tasers. So when we pull the taser, it's going to automatically activate it too.
Are they activated in the car when you turn on the lights or is that?
Yes.
I heard that, but I wanted to verify.
Yes.
So what, so lights, pulling out the taser, what else would activate it?
We can also get it, so Bluetooth on our holsters, so when that's pulled, that'll activate it. So anything that can go off Bluetooth, you can have activated. The most common, when you go into most emergencies, you're going to activate your lights so that automatically do it or they can manually hit record.
Okay.
Does any, so in C, it says any person for data subjects, any person or entity whose image or voice is documented, so that's anyone whose voice is on the video can request that?
Yes.
So you could, you could, there could be a lockdown at school and you have officers coming, you have to record something happened, anyone that's talking in the background can request to be that video?
Yes, but we'd have to prove that they're one of the subjects in the video.
Through voice or image, okay. You mentioned showing it to quell rumors, what if the incident recorded does not shine positively upon your department, do you still show it then?
That'd be per, per incident. If, if we're going to be transparent, we'll show it to the public if it doesn't show well on us and.
Yeah. Anybody else got questions before we open the public hearing?
I think just one, Josh. It's my thoughts, I don't know if it's a question or a thought, but is there ever a reason, I guess, when we're interacting with the public that it would be a good idea to not have our body cams on? I feel like it's asking for trouble, you know, even if you're just general interaction with the public and to not have it on and then all of a sudden, the public wants to say, oh, officer so-and-so was aggressive with me, all of a sudden, they didn't have their body cam on. I mean, it's hard to refute that when they have the technology to just have it on. I guess to me, it seems like we should just have them on when we're interacting with the public. I get it in the, in the office and, you know, on their personal, away from the public time, shutting them off, but that's just my opinion.
It would create so much more data that the police department has to then catalog and keep track of and all of that if you're documenting things like someone stopping you on the street and asking for directions when it's not a, because it talks in the policy about when you feel like something is being escalated or if you're speaking to someone about and gathering evidence about a case or an investigation or you are gathering, you're doing some other kind of a follow-up on a call, you're going to have that on because that is, those are the circumstances that are going to trigger you to turn it on.
Is our data storage a concern?
Well, it's not the storage and, and I, I, to my knowledge, it's not the storage as much as probably the work, it would, the manpower to catalog all of that and then keep track of who's in it and keep all of it for however many months unless it's an active investigation and then it goes in another bucket and, but I don't, I didn't mean to jump in and step on you either, sorry.
So it, it's like the instance, like right now, me being in a meeting or something, I don't have to record that and that's, that's something our officers do too, so that's why it gives them those options. But most of what they go to, they're getting dispatched to a call for service, so it's going to be activated.
Okay.
One last question for me. I know we can see all this and it's in the notes, but I'm just, if, when we talk about non-employees, if the local paper or Post Bulletin requested or the KTTC requested the video, are they, can they request video from an accident or a crime scene if someone goes to it and turns it on? Can they request that data?
They could request it, but it is private data, so.
Okay.
Most of it, they would not get less than a use of force incident.
Yep. So, okay, so as we look at number two, it's maybe, maybe I'm off, unless data is in an active investigation, individual subject shall be provided, provided with a copy. That must just be the subject that was in it?
Correct.
Not the actual, okay. So we've been having some data requests, is this data, can they request it? That's what I was wondering.
Any other questions?
I'm not, I am in favor of the cameras, but how much time do you think this was going to take for each officer when they have to label and transfer and all of that per shift?
No difference than right now, because right now, as soon as you hit stop, they label what it is.
Okay.
And then we'll, it's all timestamped, so we know what, the call for service, we can go back and find it.
Okay, so it's taking place as, like they finish a call, they stop, they, like a doctor with medical record notes? Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Is that what they do when they sit in the car after pulling you over and you drive away?
That's one of the things we're doing is recording that and then putting our notes in the computer.
No other questions? I will open the public hearing if there's anybody in the public that would like to come make a comment or have questions about the body worn camera policy. Okay, I see none, I will close the public hearing. Thank you.
So your action would be to either approve or make a motion to approve or disapprove of?
Or ask for further discussion if you.
Yeah, I mean, is there any other discussion or?
As a reminder, what's the cost of this?
So, may I have a question that last time? So the body worn cameras themselves will be six, $7,693 per year is the current, current offer and then to go with Axon in-car cameras, which we have to start replacing those, but right now we have a watch where we have to start replacing those anyways, it's $13,440. So $21,133 per year for all the cameras we need and the data storage. And that's a five-year contract and that will include an initial body camera year one, refresh year three for the body cameras, so it's going to be two cameras and then the in-car cameras will be one initially and then a refresh of year five.
How long do you have to store the videos after they've been recorded?
So general contacts are 90 days.
Okay.
If there's no evidentiary value.
Okay.
If it lays out some different standards and times?
Like use of force incidents are basically 90, 100 years indefinitely.
So if we ever switch companies, they would just move the data to that next company?
That would be the goal or you'd have?
If you have.
Just have raw data.
Yeah, okay. Have other cities that have done this seen any issues legally as videos have been done?
Well, of course, there's been issues with different cities and how they do the data, but I mean, I don't think those are unusual. I mean, they're, you know, somebody's going to request it and they may have a argument in court whether they deserve the data or not and it has to go through that process. You know, unfortunately, we live in a litigious society.
And that, will that then cost us money if we have to go to court on it?
Probably.
But it's no different now than when they request your report either.
Yeah.
Still going to be the same timeframe, it's just, it's just a little more protection for the public and for officers having the video.
And you would say all the officers are in favor of this right now?
Yes.
And the union?
Yes.
Okay. It's a good benefit for them.
Yeah, no, I, both. I'm indifferent because I'm not the one wearing it, you guys are, so I just want to make sure that you guys want it.
And, and before the law changed, there was some officers that were carrying personal body cameras prior to 2020 and then the law changed, classified as private data and all the requirements.
Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion?
Doesn't sound like it'll add to their workload, sounds like they all want it, so.
Or a motion?
Make a motion to approve the, oh, can't take that back, sorry. Do we have funds for this right now? That was my last question. Where is this, where is this funding coming from?
Well, I mean, it'll be part of the budget request the mayor, or the mayor will receive, the council will receive from, from the police department this year for the, for next year. So it's not, I mean, it's not currently part of their budget, but it would be part of that increase.
So this would start next year?
So I would like to start the purchasing process right now and they can delay the billing. The hardware is three to four months out anyways, so by the time we got the hardware and got everything going and then they can delay the payment too, so hopefully we can get them implemented this year and the payments would start next year. That would be my goal.
For next year possibly.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would work with Josh and with the vendor to make sure that, I mean, because if, if we can pay for some of it this year, then, you know, we've had some vacancies in the department, as you know, so there may be some fund balance that could be utilized early ahead, you know, without having to go over budget, on the bottom line of the budget at least, so.
And the prices for the camera is contractually guaranteed, it's not going to go up depending on which country is producing the cameras and where they're coming?
Right now, if we sign a contract, yes, we can.
We hope.
And I would make the motion to approve the draft, the, the body worn camera policy as presented in our packet and then do you do a separate one to approve the expenditure or is all?
You can do that tonight, you don't have to do it tonight, we could do it as part of the budget process, up to you, but we would do a separate one at some point in time.
We could have the numbers in front of us.
Yeah, that might be helpful, yeah.
Move to approve the policy as presented in the packet?
I mean, I think hearing the feedback from you all, I mean, it sounds like we're planning on adding this to the budget, it's just a matter of knowing what the exact amounts would be without having an open-ended, we'll do it no matter what it costs kind of a thing, which is something we should, we should take a look at first, so.
We have a motion to approve the body worn camera policy. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Committee report, there's none old business, no plowing policy. There's a new updated policy in.
Sure, so just try to take some of the feedback that we, we got from the, from the council, lay out some highlights there, you know, when will the city start plowing snow, the works director will decide by 12:00 PM and based on the forecast weather staff will decide to declare a storm emergency. It may last for 48 hours after said snowfall. During the policy, or during that period of time, it's not lawful to park. We're going to make every effort to contact local media outlets regarding declaration of storm emergency, including the social media and the city website. There's the criteria that were laid out and then, you know, the, under bullet point three there, you know, we, we kind of lay out how we and why we have a policy and then we would ask people to sign up for that, you know, E notification so they can get the alerts. You know, we took a look at all the other city policies and, and we don't want to go with the opposite side parking, you know, if we can avoid that, so we felt like this was a good compromise. Part of it is just educating our, you know, our police officers, we have some newer officers too, and making sure that they're acting within the most bounds of their discretion when they're giving tickets and things like that too is, you know, if they do their job, they do it well, sometimes maybe they do a little too well when it comes to ticketing and snowfall, but trying to have them communicate with whoever is, with Charlie really, you know, as Charlie's going to be talking to whoever's on duty that night, saying, hey, you know, it's a snow emergency, making sure that's communicated if, you know, if Josh is not in or something like that, so.
I really think the more you hammer this E notification thing out to people, it's really going to make a difference.
I assume when winter comes back around again, we can slip something into our utility billing.
Yeah, we absolutely will. Problem is, a lot of times with those utility bills, I wish everyone looked at it, but I know they don't.
They won't look at it?
Yeah, a lot of times people don't, but, but we will, I mean, you know, nowadays it's hard to get stuff out, but now, you know, Facebook is big still for us, a lot of people see that, especially on the parents page, things like that. But yeah, utility bills, city website, and then you can call into like KMIT or KAL and you can have a storm emergency declared as a, as a public service, they do that for cities, so that'll be our plan.
Just one question, Tim.
Sure.
Under point two, it says this may last for 48 hours. I guess, are you and Charlie going to like decide how long you want it to last for and like put that in the storm emergency?
Well, I think it's, you know, yeah, it would depend a lot on what the forecast is, you know, and so I think we put that out as part of our post. You know, for example, if we're getting a two or three inch snow, you know, and, and I know it says three inches in there, but if it's really blowing, we may, we may decide to plow anyways for that if it's possible, but if we're getting, which we haven't had for three years now, we haven't anything, you know, like a 10-inch snow, that's where it would probably last longer. Where it would be a 48 hour, whereas, you know, a smaller snow, they might be able to complete that within one day. You know, really, it would be almost like a 12-hour.
Yeah, I think that'd be beneficial just to let the public know and you can always extend it then.
Yeah, and that's true too. I mean, I contemplated not putting any time limit in there, but I feel like that's a good guidance for us because our, our staff should have it plowed within 48 hours, at least so that it's drivable and that, you know, it may not be curb-to-curb quite yet, but, because always the second day for us is the loadout because those areas like cul-de-sacs and stuff, you know, Linda lives on cul-de-sac, they've got to come back and they've got to clear that out. So it still would mean that, that token, some people might be able to park on the street, but some people we would say, well, you're in a cul-de-sac, we don't really want you parked on the street still.
Yep, agreed.
Any other questions or concerns? If not, I would take a motion to approve the snow plowing policy as updated.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Brian. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. There's no new business, administrator's report.
All right, we're cruising night, that's good. Every time I say it's going to be a short meeting, we end up going like an hour.
I know.
So I was telling them, I got a knock on wood here. Just a few things to highlight, the folks at legislature are back from their, their holiday break, so they've got three weeks left to get a whole budget done and all the omnibuses and the League of Minnesota Cities sent out a nice breakdown, so I read through a bunch of them and right now, the forecast for this year for LGA is that there's no changes forecast for '25, which is good because that was certified last year, so we would hope they wouldn't change it, but it's up to the state. But next year, they are forecasting possibly a reduction, so depends on who ends up getting the priority at this legislature. You know, the education component is, is a big part of their budget and so is HHS. Those are the two biggest ones that have seen a lot of money and so a lot of the cuts will probably come in those two areas also, but I wouldn't be surprised if they at least froze the LGA. That would make sense to me from the, the budget perspective if you're taking a conservative approach. I know the counties are going to, they're going to have a lot of, a lot of cuts with HHS, so anyway, park and rec, so I'll keep watching that, like I said, by, by the, the next meeting we have, we'll have a pretty good idea whether they're going to get a budget during the regular session or if they're going to go a special session. I wouldn't be surprised at all if they went to special session because there just doesn't seem to be a lot of urgency, but I'm not legislator, which I'm thankful for. Park and rec updates, I had a really good park and rec meeting, good attendance, I really appreciate those volunteers. As the mayor mentioned, we've got that Arbor Day celebration, which you're welcome to come out to on Friday. We're going to be putting some trees up in the Northwest Park. We try to rotate around, the last couple of years, we've been in Northeast Park, Lions Park, last year we did some Veterans Park trees, so they're going to be doing up there. They're also going to be building a parking area up there, so we're trying to start incrementally make some improvements at the Northwest Park at lower cost for us if we can do it internally. They also started the modular installation this week, so we had a couple of calls, people said, what are they digging? Well, it's for the modular up in Northeast Park, so it's pretty exciting for them, they're going to try and do as much of that as themselves as they can too. Other than that, let's see, there's some fundraising going on, I think I included that in your, in your packet tonight for the new accessible swing, so that, that's exciting too. We've already had some, some good folks with feedback for donations for that to try and accelerate that project so that it can move forward. I'm trying to think if there's anything else to highlight, I don't know if there's anything else I should highlight from that, Ryan, but that was, that was the highlights, I think, pretty much.
Yeah, and then just we're upping the number of trees possibly for next year, knowing that the Southwest project could.
That's right, so that was.
A lot of trees coming out, people might want to add new boulevard trees, so we only had 26, I think, this last year in the program that were purchased, but we think maybe there'll be more next year, so just to plan for that with the projects around town.
Yeah, that's right. Housing study, so something that Casson EDA, the county board, and then we have a grant from ComPure Financial, moving forward with that, we met with the Maxfield folks last week, it was a good meeting, Ian and I were up there, had a lot of feedback from the, the county, there were a lot of county representatives that were at the meeting and there was representatives from Manorville and Casson and West Concord and Dodge Center all there as well. So I mean, it was, it was a good meeting, I think, I think they said that they were looking at probably early, mid-July for hopefully having a draft that then we'll start reviewing. Last time they, they divided it by, you know, sort of in threes, they said Eastern Dodge County, Central and then the West. This time they're looking at actually more specific data per city, which, you know, it makes sense to a certain extent. I think that the forecast probably for the Western part of the county probably hasn't changed a lot since 2018, but it will be interesting to see what they come up with. So anyway, that's always useful for us with housing. It also gave us a good idea on a, at a staff level, I know Ian and I have talked about it a lot, like, you know, we've seen growth with single family, we've seen growth with some rental, we've seen some apartments. We think that maybe senior would be the last sort of piece of that, that might be a, a good need that needs to be filled, but hopefully this study will give us some idea of what the, what the need is. Tax increment financing, you're more familiar with it now probably than you were last year, considering we've had a couple of presentations from Mr. Rubini for a couple of tips. They're looking at changing some of that. I'm not expecting a lot of action on it, because I just think that the legislature is probably going to kind of grind to a, I just don't expect a lot to be accomplished. I think they're going to get a budget by the skin of their teeth and probably a lot of other things that if they're controversial at all, they'll get punted back. You can see the budget targets in there. And that's pretty much what I've got for my report, so if there's any questions, I would be glad to take those.
On the, uh, Minnesota cities, is there a budget for any of us? Is there still money in the budget for any of us to go?
Yeah, there is.
Four of us went to the last event.
Yeah, we do have, we have some money reserved left over for that. We do have one, I think Brian signed up for it already, so I appreciate that. So if you're interested, you know, let us know if you can as soon as possible, because I think that, we'd like to get the early bird, obviously, before the price goes up, but there should be some funding allowable for that still.
Making sure there's actual stuff funded.
Yeah. Let me think, I don't think I have anything else tonight. We've got the financial report for the first quarter of this year, the year-to-date in your packet as well, so.
Thank you, Tim. Up next, our engineers' report, and Brandon is not here tonight.
So I'm just going to highlight the things that he's got tonight.
Thank you.
You'll see in there, there's a resolution calling for a public hearing. We received our bids back at, last week for the residual. Basically, we've had bids on water tower this year now, the southwest, and this is kind of the rest of the work that's going to be done. And it includes a number of different things. If you look through that, that, sort of that packet of things, you can see a lot of different items, there's a, different schedules. Some trails, like in the northwest and along the French Row by the cemetery there, some trails by the, by Windsor Court, some work being done at Ace, that's probably the dominant part of it, that water main replacement, resurfacing of that, reconstruction of that road up there, and then the work that's going to be done in the downtown. After discussing it out with, with staff, we are going to, we are going to punt the lighting change out this year, possibly to the future for Main Street, so we're going to keep the current lighting. We have a negotiation with People's Co-op right now that we've entered into for the Service Terry Talk acquisition, which you're familiar with. And the cost of that is going to be substantial, so I want to reserve any funds we can. If it's not something we have to do, I think we're going to keep those, those monies in electric this year. So anyways, so it came in under budget, or under the engineer's estimate, I should say, which is always good. And you could see in there the resolution that's calling the public hearing, and then the, the city engineers got his, his memo there. So, you know, we're glad to see good bids that, that came in, another good set of bidders again this year, so.
Anybody got any questions for Tim? If not, I would call for, take a motion to approve the resolution, accepting the bid, and calling the public hearing for assessments on May fourteenth here at City Hall.
And we wouldn't be actually accepting, we won't be accepting or approving the bids until the fourteenth. So this is just a call for the hearing on the assessments for that project. We wouldn't be awarding anything if there's until that point.
So this is just, this is just a resolution call for a public hearing?
That's right.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mel. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, polls? Thank you. Next, personnel. We have a resignation of a probationary firefighter, Ellenson.
Make the motion to approve the resignation letter from Mr. Ellenson.
Thank you, Ryan. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Well, thank him for his service and second the motion.
Thank you, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Thank you. Attorney? No?
I have nothing for tonight.
Thank you. Then there's some correspondence, there's some water flushings going on pretty soon. So if you notice any discoloration in your water, it's probably one of them flushing hydrants, just so people know. If there's nothing else, I would.
At that roundtable then?
Roundtable.
That's right. So, yeah, just to preface, after the parking rec board, Councilman Christensen and I just discussed it briefly. We do have a resolution for the, for the meetings for the folks. Talked to David over at the library and they said that's perfect use of their space. So, you know, if they come and pick up a key on Friday or Saturday, then they can, they can do their meetings Sunday night in the, in the library, you know, January through, I think it was April or something like that. As for the other, you know, our guidance is, you know, to maintain the current policy. After speaking with Ryan about it, he had a question about possibly establishing a nonprofit rate for the fire hall. And Ryan, I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, one of the committee members for Festival in the Park contacted me about the fees for nonprofit organizations and even ones that are just within the, within the city. And so I said I would bring it up. I think we need more data, just from how many rentals we're having. Are we, are we not bringing in, we're not trying to make money, but we're just trying to pay for things that we need there. So is the policy that we have in place working and then come back later and see if we want to have a nonprofit type of a fee for those, for those committees or groups that want to still use the space but are nonprofit versus a, a public citizen that wants to rent it for a birthday party? I know they're different, but I want to honor everyone that is trying to go to it. And they asked to waive the fees, and I didn't, I did not speak to that, because that's not something I could speak to. But they had requested that, so I thought I'd bring that to everyone. But I just thought maybe a nonprofit charge after so many months of data might not be a bad idea.
Well, and on that too, I had a couple of people ask why the city charges for the fire hall and not like per se the library. And one of the biggest things was, at the fire hall, not only have the meeting room, but you have the kitchen. So then there's more area to maintain and clean and, you know, the, you know, the library is a room. So, and that was part of it.
And the library board made the decision not to charge for nonprofits too.
Right.
It's their building.
And it's theirs.
So they get to make that choice.
So that was one of the differences that, you know, I tried to point out.
I just wanted to honor that citizen's questions and bring that to us as a group and.
Yeah, I, I agree with your assessment, Ryan, that I think it's keep it as is for now and get some more data on how it's renting out and we can always revisit it.
All we can do is, you know, we set our fee schedule usually, you know, towards the end of the year. You know, we can bring that data back and Linda's, she's coordinating a lot of the, the scheduling for that. So maybe that'd be something she, she and I could sit down and take a look at in late November, early December, and see what it looks like and implement that potential rate class for the room if, if it seems warranted at that time.
It would be nice to know also at the end of the year, like, how much does it actually cost the city when we rent that room?
Sure. That's going to be hard to, that's going to be hard to track in terms of, for example, like utilities and things like that. It's going to be, that's going to be difficult to say.
Because it is.
Water and electric and natural gas usage for the, the kitchen itself.
It's not so much that as it is with the kitchen in terms of wear and tear, replacement of things like that. That's more what my concern is, if we're just looking to pay for the building, not the building, the equipment in the room that is used in terms of getting, like.
Yeah.
Eventually, you'll have to replace that stove.
Yeah.
Is it being used more by renters than it is by firefighters? You know, data like that would be good to know.
And you would have.
Setting a price.
Yeah, you'd have to almost have a follow-up survey per se with the people that use it to see what they use, because some might not use any of that equipment, you know.
Right.
So it'd be kind of hard too, but I think you could do it if you asked them if they used it, if they.
Yeah, I mean, like, certainly, you know, ask the, the fire chief to keep track of when they're utilizing it.
They, they do.
They do, okay.
Because he has me block it off on the calendar.
Yeah, but I mean, using the kitchen and, and appliances and things like that, to Mel's point about the wear and tear.
I know they use their washer and dryers more than they probably use.
Yeah, most likely. You know, that's, maybe I can give some thought to that and see what would be the best method to, to try. Because I mean, you know, it's, it's good to get some analytics and data on, you know, really what is the cost? You know, we can say, okay, if we say it's an hour of cleaning time for, for a person to clean it up, then that, that gives us like, okay, we know what we're paying our cleaner per hour, so that's a, that's a flat fee. Okay, cool. If we know, like, if we can figure in, okay, you know, and we probably could track, you know, we have the talent system. So I could say, okay, well, if all the lights were on, I mean, I could find out how much would it cost for it to be operating for that, that period of time. And I mean, it's not going to be a lot, to your, to your point, but I mean, there is a charge. So, and we can at least get some of those data points together. Yeah, I'll talk to the staff and see if there's other thoughts they have on it too.
I mean, it's just sort of like our permitting for food trucks and things like that. We're not trying to make money on it, we're just trying to cover our costs.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, it's a public service that we're providing. You know, it's, it's no different from like the aquatic center or something like that where we don't want to lose our shorts on it, but it is intended to be for the public.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
If that is all, if nobody else, any else, anything else, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ryan. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, polls? Thank you, everybody.
Probably not going to be on the fourteenth, it might be on the twenty-eighth.